Good evening, I'm Mark Shipley. I'm one to, we have a little bit of an unusual event tonight. The chairman and vice chairman were, are out, so I'm asking the planning commission to appoint someone to lead the meeting. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the planning commission to make that appointment.
Would you like me to make a motion? Yep. In light of the circumstances, I'd like to make a motion to nominate the mayor, Williams, as to act as the chairman for this evening for the purpose of conducting this meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay. Well, in favor of that? In your favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, folks, it's approximately 6:00 PM and the January 16th, 2025 Farragut Municipal Planning Commission meeting will now begin. Good evening to all the folks or attendants on the online tonight. Thank you all for attending municipal planning commission meeting. My name is Mayor Ron Williams. I will be conducting tonight's planning commission meeting. We appreciate that each of you has taken the time from your busy schedules to either attend or review tonight's meeting and to observe how our town government works. All Farragut planning commission meetings are public notice per Tennessee State Law, TCA 8-44-103. All planning commission meetings are streaming on the Farragut YouTube channel and the links to the recordings may be found on Town of Farragut website. Those in attendance should be able to pick up a copy of the agenda at the door when you come in tonight, and if you're not able to attend in person and are viewing from home, you'll be able to see the agenda posted on Town of Farragut's website. For any persons in attendance who would like to address this commission concerning an item on tonight's agenda, please pick up a blue card at the door and write your name, address, and the agenda number that you'd wish to comment on. There will also be time reserved tonight at the end of the business meeting for residents' comments on non-agenda subjects, which also requires that you fill out a blue card, include your name and address and topic of your comments. On each agenda item, the chairman will ask the town staff for Farragut residents' input. During this time, any Farragut resident wishing to speak to the planning commission on that specific agenda item may do so for up to three minutes. After being recognized by the chairman, please proceed to the podium microphone in order to be heard and viewed by all. To conduct efficient business-like meetings, the Town of Farragut has adopted rules for how its meetings are run and how they're conducted. Primarily, these rules are designed to keep the meeting progressing along and assure that all points of view are heard and considered and to provide a common courtesy to everyone. We ask that you observe the established meeting rules when addressing the members of the town staff or the members of the planning commission. At the beginning of your presentation, please state your name and address for the record. We ask that you address your questions to the chairman. If necessary, chairman may call on the commissioner or a staff member to address your questions or comments. Once you've given your input, please return to your seats so we can continue. We ask that persons speaking avoid the use of improper language, profanity, and please only address the agenda issues. The speaker should strive to present original viewpoints and avoid redundancy. We ask also that you stay on a topic. Okay, meeting called to order. I now ask if, if you're able, to please stand for a moment of silence and a prayer and reflection to be followed by the recital of the Pledge Allegiance to Our Country's Flag that the Vice Mayor will lead us in tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mark, it appears that we do have a quorum. And are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
No, sir.
None? Is there a motion to amend or approve the stated?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Approval minutes, are there any changes to the posted minutes?
No, sir.
None? Need a motion, please, to approve the minutes?
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
Okay, let the record show that the minutes have been approved by the commission with one abstain. Proclamation, okay, tonight, I want to read a proclamation that is in honoring the Town of Farragut anniversary and also for Betty Dick Day. And let me find that. Okay, whereas residents of southwest corner of Knox County area were concerned about low development standards and unfettered commercial developments in the 1970s, and whereas a dedicated group of men and women grew wary of having their concerns ignored by Knox County government, whereas this Farragut community group believed that planning could be better administered at the local level, took on the task of incorporating a new municipality with its own elected body and planning commission in 1979. Whereas efforts required the group to devote countless hours to registering voters, creating a map of the town's boundaries, and convincing neighbors that incorporation could be accomplished with no new taxes. Whereas after incorporation was achieved on January 16th, 1980, the group continued to fight against annexation for its share of the sales tax revenue. Whereas the Farragut community group was ultimately successful in defending the new municipality, named for Civil War naval hero Admiral David Farragut, and elected his first board of mayor and alderman on April 1st, 1980. And whereas the Town of Farragut continues to define a quality of life with a beautiful, close-knit, connected community where families and businesses thrive. Now therefore, the planning commission and the board of mayor and alderman of Farragut does hereby designate the third week of January, its founder's week, to recognize the contributions of the Farragut community group, members Ralph McGill, Eric Johnson, Betty Dick, Ron Sumandal, Jean McNally, and George Dorsey, David Rogers, and express appreciation for the hard work that resulted in incorporation of the Town of Farragut. Thank you. Okay, it looks like we have eight business items to review and discuss and consider in our public hearing. Agenda number one will be discussion and public hearing on preliminary plat road improvements associated with Farragut area elementary school. 2002 Village Commons Boulevard, 41 acres, owned R1 and P1. McCarty, Osappel, McCarty applicant.
Yes, this project is dealing just really with road improvements this evening in association with Knox County Elementary School that all of y'all know about. It's on the 41 acre track there that's on the screen, just to the east of Village Commons and south and east of Baldwin Park off of Boring Road. The county conducted a traffic impact study for this project, and there were two areas that we're specifically looking at this evening that the county is proposing to make some road improvements to Town of Farragut streets. One of the areas, and this is kind of an overview of the overall school layout, let me pull up the pointer here if I can get that. So here's Village Commons coming up from Kingston Pike, and you got Boring Road over here along the east and the north, and all the way out to Smith, which is over here. This Baldwin Park here, Village Commons is here. So the first area where they're proposing improvements is up along a section of Boring Road in this particular area here. Currently, there is from Smith Road to the eastern end of Baldwin Park, when Saddlebrook developed Baldwin Park, they improved that section of Boring Road to basically two 12-foot lanes with curb and gutter and a sidewalk on the south side of Boring Road. So the county is proposing to extend that same cross-section all the way to where, just past where the eastern leg of the walking trail that was constructed with the Countryway subdivision on the north side of Boring Road comes into Boring Road. So this section that's shaded is the section I'm talking about. And then they would have an internal, and this, this is designed to be the bus entrance and exit for the school, and they would be coming in off of Smith Road, not coming up Boring Road because everyone knows this section of Boring Road is very substandard. So that's what they're proposing to improve there, continuing that cross-section with sidewalk, and then they would have a sidewalk that ties from the sidewalk, they're building on Boring Road down into the school's development. So that is one of the areas, and then over on, let me go ahead and pull this up here, this is a little more detail. On the, on this top of this screen, this is that Boring Road cross-section in a little bit more detail. This is the access into the school property that they're proposing. And so that's, that's one of the areas they're also proposing in association with Boring Road, some school speed limit signs along Smith Road and a marked crosswalk across Boring Road at its intersection with Smith Road. The other area that we're looking at with this project is Village Commons Boulevard itself, and this is basically, here's Kingston Pike over here on the right. Coming in on Village Commons Boulevard, there's currently two raised medians. In order to have better turning movements and more stacking, they're taking out this southernmost raised median, and then they're taking out most of the northernmost raised median, or, I'm sorry, they're taking out this part of the northernmost, and that just basically frees up better turning movements into and out of the school's access. But the primary access for the school, other than buses, is going to be Village Commons So one thing to kind of just give you an overview of here, this project is a little bit different because to the extent that the county is, is a political subdivision of the state, there are certain limitations that the town can require the county to do with this particular project. We can certainly ask them to do certain things, and they are doing some things, but to the level that we would have if somebody were developing this as a private development, you know, we are much more limited and constrained with what we can actually require. So I just want to make that, that point clear as I go through some of these intersections. One of the things that the, the planning commission does have the authority to do is, is review the extent and location of public improvements, and we do that with utility projects, we do that with town projects, and that's what we're doing with this particular project tonight. So with regards to the traffic impact study, we asked Darrell Smith, the town engineer, and he's here, to look at the different intersections that would be affected and that were studied as part of the traffic impact study. And he kind of just has a little summary that I included in the packet, and we'll just kind of briefly go through these. Kingston Pike at Smith Road, the level of service, and basically level of service is just how well the traffic moves, an A is a good, good, F is not good. So that's kind of a general summary of how that works. If, if you're in an F, you're basically at a standstill, you know, there's no movement of traffic and it's very inefficient. A is just free-flowing traffic movement, no, no issues. So with this particular intersection, the level of service is relatively good and would remain so with the project. One thing that he did point out, and it's currently an issue, is eastbound traffic backs up pretty far in this turn lane, and that will only be exacerbated with this project. So that is something that was noted by the town engineer. They did not propose, the county does not propose to do anything with that, given the close proximity with Sugarwood Drive, which is just, just down here to the, kind of the south. So that's one of the intersections. Looked at the, second one's Kingston Pike at Federal. That one currently is a level of service D, which is not particularly good during the AM peak. The PM peak is a level of service B. With the build-out, the intersection would be a level of service C. Kingston Pike at Boring, that is, anybody that's ever tried to turn out of Boring, and if you're trying to turn east, it's not a good idea. That intersection's, right now, it's a level of service F, so for southbound movements, which I think everybody would agree with that. And that will continue with the build-out of this project. Again, the goal of the school is to not have that section of Boring Road as, as an access point. You know, I don't really know how they would prohibit that. I think there's going to be some of that. They can probably limit it, but that's, you know, that is obviously an intersection that, you know, is, is difficult. And all, you know, most of these intersections in the school project in general is something that is on the town's radar screen. We're going to be talking with our town board about this project and its impact to our community to see, you know, what kind of direction, what kind of things they want us to look at to try to work with the county to help mitigate this, the impacts. So this might be one of those intersections, perhaps a, a right-in, right-out at Kingston Pike might be something that we could, could look at. The next one is Kingston Pike at Village Commons, and as I mentioned earlier, this is really the primary entrance and exit for the school. That one at full build-out will decrease from a level of service B to an E during the AM peak, so the level of service will drop substantially for that particular intersection. So a couple of things that I mentioned earlier that the county's engineering team has proposed there was taking out that southernmost median to allow more stacking at that access point into and out of, and that's mainly what they're proposing. There's also a slight lengthening of the eastbound left turn lane on Kingston Pike that's, that's part of their recommendations as well for that intersection. And then finally, Smith Road at Boring Road. It operates at a good level of service, but the westbound approach on Boring Road would decrease to a level of service E during the AM peak. So basically, as the buses are coming westbound to Smith, the level of service would be, would not be good. So the consultant looked at a traffic signal at this location, it would, it doesn't meet the warrants. They looked at a four-way stop, and that would increase the average delay time, and they did not ultimately recommend that. That's something that we could certainly revisit, perhaps with the county. What they are recommending along Smith Road is to have the 20 mile an hour school zone signs on each side to try to, again, slow the, the traffic speeds through that, through that area because we know that buses are going to be coming into and out of that intersection. It's kind of a similar approach to what we did at the school zone on Grigsby Chapel Road near St. John Court. So some other things that were noted, just a general comment, is maybe considering some other school zones associated with this project, maybe along Village Commons Boulevard and Boring Road. So that's kind of an overview of what the town engineers' thoughts were on the traffic impact study at those different intersections. This kind of gives you a visual of just a layman's perspective of what a level of service A versus F is if you're looking at a, let's say, an interstate. So this is an A and this is an F. That is all I have on this. I do have a couple of folks that have signed up to speak to this, three now, oh, four? Okay. I've got some people that have signed up to speak, so I'll turn it over to you all.
Okay. On this, we do need a motion, Mark?
Yes, sir, you'll need a motion. Their request is to approve the road construction plans for this project.
Okay. So we're, we're, our motion will be to approve just the road construction plans, right?
Yeah, what's being presented to you all. Yes, sir.
Okay, then I will need a motion.
My motion to approve the plan is presented.
Okay. I'll second. Okay. At this point, I guess, let's start with our, our residents.
Just as a reminder, this will be three minutes, so just try to keep your, keep your thoughts organized if you can, please. The first speaker is Wes Emerson, and after Wes is Kimberly Parks.
Okay, Wes.
Wes. Oh, you're, wait a minute. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
You want to look at the last one?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I just figured for this one, everybody else is, so. Okay, Kimberly Parks.
Ms. Parks, then you're up, please.
Hello. Um, what's your name?
Wait a minute.
Hello? Okay.
Oh, yeah, you're working.
All right. So I actually reached out to the school board about this project and the proposed plot. Mark, can you put the plot back up there real quick? Um, so I don't know if any of you guys have ever sat in elementary school traffic. I have, back when my boys were young. The elementary school, the primary, does a beautiful job with conducting the traffic. I know it's a headache to sit in it all day, or not all day, but, you know, twice a day, you know, for like an hour or so, but this plot map does not allow for the continuous flow of parents to pick up their children. It does not allow for that. There's no, there should be one entrance in and one entrance out, and it does not allow for that. And I've already brought this up to the planner of this project, and he told me that you guys were on board with only one entrance and exit and the same thing. And they told me that it was, you guys were on board with the plat map. So I'm asking that you guys make it more functional because there's no way that the teachers can conduct the same thing that they do now that they would be able to do. This would, it would help mitigate traffic because you, you've seen it, Shannon, they do a really good job. So anyway, just my two cents, take it at what you will, but my suggestion is that you put another exit on Boring Road, or not exit, an entrance only on Boring Road. That's my, my suggestion. Well, no, like right there, right at the beginning, like to where you guys don't have a whole bunch, it's just an entrance only. So that's my suggestion to alleviate from Kingston Pike traffic.
Okay, next.
Okay, Joe LaCroy.
Okay, Joe, you're up.
Hello, everybody, Joe LaCroy, 11123 Farragut Hills Boulevard. I've got two questions, or, yeah, two questions. So the first one is reading through the traffic study, there was a lot of talk or reference back to the Knox County Department of Engineering and Public Works handbook. My question to you all is, are they going to uphold the standards that we've had in the Town of Farragut? We know that Knox County does not uphold our standards. So if they're looking at and only going off of the handbook that has brought to us Loop Road and Woody Road as a, excuse me, as an appropriate road to travel on, are we going to have the same problems with this development? The second one goes back to Kingston Pike and Smith Road and the eastbound traffic. I know that this body, the board of mayor and alderman, cannot enforce our rules on Knox County, but we also know that Knox County schools is the primary cause of traffic at West End and those school systems down there. We know it's a mess, and they're going to bring another mess to Kingston Pike, or a bigger mess, let me say bigger mess, to eastbound Kingston Pike and, and Smith Road. What is the town going to do to make changes to that roadway to keep the level of service there where it's not another West End to us? So, thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Next.
Next speaker I have is Brittany Moore, and after Brittany, the last speaker that signed up was Karen Johnson.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Brittany Moore, I live at 221 Boring Lane. I am the fourth generation to live in the house that I live in, my kids are the fifth generation. Unfortunately, they're past the age to be in the school, so it's not convenient for me, but it's okay. I have one question that wasn't addressed in any of the information. We've seen numbers on the numbers of students in the school, the buses, and then there's one place in the proposal that it talks about staff also entering through that bus loop. As, there's nowhere that lists the number of staff that I've seen in any of the materials that were included, so I think if that's going to be, I think that needs to be clarified if we're using it for just buses or buses and staff because that's a totally different level of cars during that morning, afternoon time on Boring Road. With increased number of cars versus buses, that increases the issue at Boring Road and Kingston Pike. Currently, that is the way that I go majority of the time. I turn left out of there all the time with zero issues. I think it depends on the time of day. I think also with the alignment of the driveway from First Baptist Concord and Village Green across from each other, because of the school traffic from there interfering and the need of them to always have police officers there, a light there would also allow the timing between the Ingalls Light and that light to give breaks for Boring Road in and out of there. I would love to see in the traffic study, time for those residents who live on Boring Road, Boring Lane, to instead go around, sit in whatever additional traffic is added on Smith Road, and then get to wherever they need to be. The majority of the time, I can turn out of there with a pause and then go. So I think it's important for us to look at both ways if it were to happen before we put in a right-in and right-out. I know it's not on this plan. The last thing that I have is, there is a proposed field. I know the field is not on there, but where it is because of the way that the road goes in, if we approve this, that field could be built and used, they're proposing that to be there, and what would happen then is that traffic would then come into where that field is. Also, it creates a lot more noise, a lot more issues around for the neighbors who live there, so I would ask that you all, just like we do in the Town of Farragut, require buffers around Boring Road in the beginning of this project so those can start to get built up denser and start, hopefully eliminate some of the issues that we've had in like McPhee Park and things like that. That's really all I have to say, so thanks.
Thank you, Brittany.
Good evening, my name is Karen Johnson, I reside 344 Bernie Circle. Currently, the intersection of Boring Road and Smith Road is uncontrolled, that is, there's no traffic lights, absolutely no stop signs. There is inadequate visibility here as the intersection is situated on the crest of a steep hill arising north from Kingston Pike. Motorists turning left onto Smith Road currently from Boring Road do not have, have sufficient visibility of oncoming vehicles from the left to safely enter the intersection at all times. I know this intersection very well, for the last 10-plus years, I've been making that, that left-hand turn on, from Boring Road to Kingston, to Smith Road around mid-morning, and what I usually do is take a leap of faith, I'll look to the left, I'll look to the right, and I'll look to the left, and then I pull out, I'm ready to gun it because every once in a while, there might be someone speeding up from Kingston Pike. So my concern is, once we build this new school, there's going to be more traffic. I want to make sure that the, that the, that the school buses can safely make that left-hand turn onto. onto Smith Road from Boring Road. Traffic will increase at this intersection with the new school. Buses, of course, are going to have more difficulty making a left-hand turn there. Drivers should be able to turn to see potentially conflicting vehicles coming from Kingston Pike with enough warning to stop before entering the intersection. I would be a proponent of having the school zones with the flashing lights, but I think we need to consider having a four-way stop, perhaps a signaled traffic sign or traffic control there. Thank you very much.
And that is all that signed up for this particular item.
Okay. Okay, now, we're going to start with discussion. I guess, Daryl, you want to come up, please? Just in case we need to ask you some questions, I'd like for you to be up here, okay?
Oh, well, I'm close by.
Okay.
I will probably defer to Ardura for specific questions, but...
Yeah, I know. There's some there that... It's out of the realm of them, okay? Okay, let's see here. I think we'll start off with the Vice Mayor.
So, do you know... I know you said that for Smith Road and Boring Road, we don't meet warrants for stoplights, but we could go back and study that after the school's in place to see if it...
We can definitely do that, yes.
Okay. We can't wait... So, okay. So, we can't base the warrants on the future projected transportation volumes or anything like that?
I would prefer to wait and see what we have there, yes.
Okay, okay, okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Green.
I think it's evident from the comments that have been made by staff and the comments been made by residents that there are going to be some degrading of traffic conditions at at least three locations, one, two, three locations. What are... And we can't mandate that the county do certain things. What tools are in our toolbox to request some of the things that have been mentioned? For example, stop signs at Boring Road and Smith Road, and maybe a right turn in, right turn out at Boring Road and Kingston Pike. And I'm not sure what we do at the Smith Road, Kingston Pike, because we don't have a lot of options there. So, back to my question, what tools do we have in our toolbox to influence the county to do some of the things to improve the degraded traffic situations?
Well, we have a Board of Mayor and Alderman, for one. But as far as requesting additional consideration by the school system, I'm not sure... I'm not sure what we can do. I do know that the situation at Smith Road and the close proximity of Sugarwood Drive, there's really not a good mitigating... Mitigation of that problem. It's a problem now. You know, the background... Background traffic alone creates the queues that will back up into the eastbound through lanes. This is just going to make it a little worse.
It seems like an unfinished project to propose road changes that don't address... Doesn't even address some of the problems, all the problems, so that's the end of my comment.
Okay. Commissioner Pinchot?
Yes. I'm all in favor of the changes that have been outlined here, but my biggest concern is eastbound on Kingston Pike. I think that's a major issue right now. In the morning at eight o'clock, when I'm trying to head east, I get on Kingston Pike, and the traffic for the school system currently, the way we have it, is backed up almost all the way to Lowell Creek. And I want to turn left on Smith Road, and I can't get to that turn lane sometimes for 10, 15 minutes. And I get to get through the virtue light, I got to get through all this other traffic. And now, if we're going to have traffic for another school, and we don't have more stacking on Kingston Pike, I just don't know. It's going to be very, very difficult to mitigate this without some other lane changes or something else. And I just want to know, does the traffic study address that?
No. One possibility, as I see it, would be to relocate Sugarwood Drive over to CVS so that Sugarwood residents would have direct access to that signal. That would allow lengthening of that left turn... Eastbound left turn bay. That's a really expensive project for what it is, but it's a possibility.
It's terrible right now, and I just can't imagine what it's going to be like with another school there. And I was wondering if there was some way, maybe the two lanes that we currently have eastbound on Kingston Pike, if maybe one lane is a through lane, the far-right lane, southern lane, and then the other lane may be a turn lane and entrance for the school lane? Something has to be looked at there. We've got to look at that seriously as we proceed. But the changes that we've got here, I think, are fine. I'm not sure about the staging of cars with the one median being taken out. How many cars can we... Do we anticipate we're going to get in that stretch from Kingston Pike to where you turn to go up to the school? Do we have a number?
I would defer to Ardura for that.
How many cars are we talking about?
About 12 and 19.
I didn't hear.
He's saying about 12 at one time.
Probably need to come up to the microphone so we can record that, please.
My name is Addie Kirkham, Traffic Engineer for this project. So, the stacking we anticipate for the AM peak out for the cars leaving the school is about 300 feet.
How many cars are we...
That's about 25 feet. It's about the average length of the cars that we use to model, so that's about 12 cars.
I couldn't hear that.
12 cars.
12 cars? Are you serious? 12 cars? Wow, that's scary. That's got to be... That can't be right.
Well, I think what she means, there's just 12 that's on Village Commons.
Right, on Village Commons.
Yeah.
Yes, 12 waiting.
Coming up to the light, and then you're going to have X number of cars in the loop.
Right. Right, right. The point would be, you know, the reason you have cars that stack that long was that you don't want to continue to delay the through traffic on Kingston Pike. So, the cars coming out of the school might have to sit and wait, you know, to let Kingston Pike continue to flow like it needs to.
We've got to get you up on the microphone for any comments.
Yeah, we're...
And on the record.
Yeah, she's the one talking right now, ma'am.
Can you go back to that one slide? The bottom slide there. From Kingston Pike to where you turn to go up to the school. You're saying 12 cars is all we can get in there? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that's all that we need. That's all we anticipate.
Doesn't seem right, but that scares me. It bothers me. That's all we can say.
I'm talking about the cars leaving, not the cars entering the school. There's a lot more storage within the school grounds once you get off of Village Commons. These are just the cars coming out.
Okay. Is that all you've got, Rock?
Yeah, that's all I've got.
Okay.
Shannon?
How many cars will the onsite storage hold?
So, the onsite storage has about 4,700 feet. So, there's... If you look at that loop right there, that's double stacking. So, it can hold quite a few cars. 20 divided by like 200-ish, depending how close they go bumper to bumper.
So, if double lane, what, 400?
The 200 total, I think.
200?
100 in each lane is kind of what you're saying, based upon the length.
Mark, can you make that bigger? Okay. Sorry, that was for recommendations.
I can't do that in the PowerPoint slide.
Aaron Gray with Ardura. We're the civil engineer on this. So, the Loop Road itself is about 23, 2400 feet long, and it will double stack. So, you've got a total of about 47, 4800 linear feet of storage, and that's where the... So, you're stacking about 100 cars-ish in each lane for a total of 200 cars stacked side by side around the loop. And we did a similar setup for the county. We worked on the Adrian Burnett Project out in East Knoxville, and we've had success. We've built a similar... Their school's not quite... Obviously, not as big, but we built a Loop Road similar to this, just shorter. And they've had a lot of success out there keeping cars off of... Off the road out there.
So, the double stack starts where you have your first branch after you turn right in?
Yes.
Because there's going to be other cars leaving?
Yes, that's... So, the first... The shaded area, once you hang a right off of Village Commons, you'll come to the first intersection.
And that's where you start to double stack?
That's where we can start to double stack, yes.
Basically, a one-way.
Yes, so it's one-way from that point all the way around the loop.
So, the people that would be... Will they... Will there be people... So, it'll just be one-way in the morning? Because there's a parking lot up there. That will be accessed from Boring?
That's correct.
Okay. So, where does... So, the double stack, when you're dropping the kids off...
Right there.
Does it turn into a single stack to drop off the kids?
Yes, eventually, you would have everybody filter over to the... Kind of to the curve up against the school.
Basically, they just form... They have to go from a double line to a single line right here.
Okay.
For drop-off and pickup?
For actual drop-off.
And so, you're saying that the double stack, the 4,000... Whatever that number was.
700.
That's... That entire loop, including where it's just down to one lane, and you're not double stacking there?
Yes, ma'am.
For drop-off and...
And you could... I mean, you know, that does not include... I think there's even a little... There's a little extra that's not in that math. It's the distance from that first intersection back to Village Commons. There's another 300 feet that's not even in.
Yeah, I'm... My goal is to avoid that. The reason West End is such a mess, and it is, is because there is not enough onsite stacking. And our schools have grown, and this school is going to grow. And it's 1,400 students. So, if we're not anticipating the future needs of the town for onsite stacking, that's going to spill over onto our public roadways and be a problem for everybody in the town and not just the parents. Is there a school board representative here, or maybe you can answer this question? What's the typical site size for an elementary school?
It varies a lot. I mean, you could have ones that go from, gosh, 10, 15 acres all the way up to... I mean, this one's 40. And a lot of it has to do with topography, the lay of the land and that kind of thing. So, I mean, it would really just depend on the site.
So, to me, this site seems generous, and definitely, correct me if I'm wrong, for an elementary school, even one as large as this. It seems like especially... I mean, it just seems like we have an opportunity to really max out the stacking here so that it doesn't create a future problem for us to have to deal with. Because there's not a whole lot the town can even do to address West End. It is what it is. And even if we wanted to come in and fix it after the fact, we can't or we would've. So, we have extra space on this site. I really just want to make sure that the stacking is appropriate.
Sure, that's a fair request. So, a couple of things, just as it relates to the location and how the movement works, too. Also, to the south of the site, the south of the Loop Road, there's quite a bit of grade change as you drop down into the Ingalls. So, and there's also a... What is it not... I keep one that's called a buffer zone. Mark, what's the zoning?
I think it is a B1.
Is it a B... Yeah.
It's a buffer, and it's approximately 2 acres.
So, we're trying to avoid getting into that. So, you've got some topography and some issues there. Also, there's a significant climb, of course, back up the Boring Road, too. So, and the Loop Road itself is already, in terms of grading and topography, we've kind of maxed it out once you lay that in there. So, the loop that we have now is pretty much about as big, you know. I mean, I'm not saying it couldn't stretch, you know, a couple of feet here and there, but I mean, it's pretty much spanned more or less over the site that we have available as it sits right now.
Is it... Where you have the third set of parking spaces, would there be any possibility to add additional parking spaces next to that?
You're talking the three on the... The three kind of groups on the bottom? I mean, it could be done.
It just seems like a good opportunity, right? I don't know if you've ever seen how they do it at the primary school is... And I don't think it was designed to double stack, but they eventually did double stack it, and they've gotten very creative with the use of more paved areas. And so, I just want to make sure that we are building that in or some kind of contingency plan for that if we need it.
Sure.
Doug Shover from the school system.
I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Come on up. Identify yourself and...
Doug Shover, I'm the Director of Facilities and New Construction for Knox County Schools.
Could you ask if there was anybody from the school?
Oh, yes. So, do you feel like that this stacking is adequate, and it's not going to spill over onto Kingston Pike, even when the school is at capacity?
By all indications and based on our current facilities, the stacking depth we have onsite will accommodate our student population.
Like it currently does at FIS, FMS, the primary and the high school?
Well, again, I think you...
Or like it should?
Again, if we were doing those buildings over and we had the opportunity to have more drive there, we would. What we're saying is, in this instance, the drive width, the stacking depth that we've provided is sufficient for the population of this school.
And what do you anticipate the population will be when the school opens?
There's... I don't work with zoning and transportation. They're still in the process of determining what the zones are going to be, which will then result in what the population is day one. Again, we're dealing with the fact that there could eventually be 1,400 students in that school. So, we're not overly concerned with what's there day one. We want to make sure that we've got the things in place to deal with it when it's 1,400, whenever that may happen.
And that's what this plan takes care of?
Okay. Almena?
Yes, sir, Mayor. First of all, thank you to the Knox County Schools. We do appreciate the efforts, number one, to relieve the crowding issues that we have at our local schools, as well as trying to work with us as best you can. We do feel like, or personally, I feel like that you guys have gone kind of above and beyond, you know, what you'd probably have to do under the Tennessee Code Annotated to try to meet some of the needs that we'd like to incorporate into projects. The... I'm going to kind of start with the stacking issue. My instinct is, based upon some of the media that I've read, and that's not social media, I'm talking about like Knoxville Sentinel and the Press Enterprise, is that this school's really trying to service the kids in the southwest part of the county, which is pretty much to the west and to the south of this particular intersection. So, that tells me that the traffic going... The kid traffic, I won't talk about initially the staff traffic because it probably comes from all different directions, but the kid traffic is mostly coming from the west and the south. So, Choto Basin area, McPhee Road area, and is going eastbound on Kingston Pike. So, the stacking in both locations where the buses would stack at Smith Road, as well as the buses would stack at the Village... It's called Village Coll... I would say Village Coll. That doesn't sound right. But anyway...
The Villages.
The Villages. Those... Obviously, those are concerns. There's... Like we've talked before, we have some obstacles to try to create more stacking room, and they're not easily solved. But those are things that it does appear that maybe in the traffic study, and hopefully, the county's taking into account that the school's not necessarily centrally... It doesn't appear to me centrally located to the kids that it's going to service, the families it's going to service. It's just it's gotten the best spot that it could get to be able to try to service that south and west part of the county, which means the traffic's mostly eastbound. So, that was kind of the one thing. Unfortunately, I don't have a solution to it, being that we've already talked about the stacking issues. The other thing that... It appears... I think times have changed. When I was a kid, I rode the bus every single day till I was... Till I could drive a car. I mean, that's just how it was. It appears to me that the... And there's probably a fancy term for this, that the bus participation rates in the town of Farragut are a lot different than maybe other communities, and they're certainly different than when I was a kid. And so, what I... Guess what I'm getting to is, it just seems like parents should just drive their kids to school a lot more than they used to back in the day. And I don't know why, but the reasons are, and I don't know if there's a socioeconomic reason that that happens. But when the civil engineers design the stacking, specifically the loop that's onsite, do they take into account kind of an industry-wide bus participation rate? Or do they look at kind of suburbs or Farragut's bus participation rate to be able to come up with basically averages to figure out what the needs are with the...
that is historical data for the town of Farragut, which, again, the car ta- traffic here is considerably a higher percentage than it is in other parts of the county. So that's been taken into account.
Okay, then, thank you. That's exactly my question, and I appreciate that that data was, was collected.
Yes, sir.
Um, the, the other question that I have is, what's to keep a parent who's in a hurry from just running up Boring Road from Kingston Pike, sneaking in and trying to get their kid to sneak onsite so they don't have to get into the queue to drop their kid off? Or vice versa, pick their kid up, say, "Hey, just meet me over there by the road, I'll, I'll pick you up at three thirty." Um, it has, I, I assume there's security fencing or other measures, but how do you address that? Uh, where also address the needs of maybe kids that are in Village Green, who, who are in the, what's it called, the Prendles Responsibility, something or other?
Yeah.
So where all of a sudden those kids gotta be able to walk to school? I mean, how do you keep, uh, parents from trying to take the easy route and, and getting up there on Boring Road and parking on the shoulder and picking up and dropping off their kids?
I wish I had a good answer for you. We've battled it at every school that we've got. And, and all we can do is say, "You can't be doing that." But there's really not a whole lot that we can do that stops somebody from parking on a side street and having their child walk some distance to school, or walk to the Ingles parking lot to be picked up.
Okay.
There's not a whole lot that we can do about that.
There's nothing, I mean, the sheriff, having the sheriff's department issue, there's not a citation per se that the sheriff's-
We don't, we don't have the ability to have law enforcement do that.
Okay. But, and there's, is there anything illegal about that, that's even a citable offense?
I ca- I can't speak to that.
Okay. And, and may not be. I mean, it's a public road, they, the parents have as much right to use it as the rest of us. And so, you know, it's public property. Okay, so that, that was the other concern. It is, I'm sure, like you said, probably a concern at all the different schools. Um, and then the, the final thing, as a, as an easy suggestion, and I think one of the, maybe one of the Boring Road residents mentioned it. It seems like a, a good, easy fix at Boring Road and Smith Road would just be a four-way stop. I mean, it seems like that, that's a natural, very economical, affordable fix to be able to create some gaps in the traffic, slow that traffic down that is coming from Kingston Pike going northbound, and also make the buses a little bit easier to get it in and out. And then again, give some relief to the residents that are also trying to get it in and out at the same time. That, that intersection right there, what's, what is that, Dominic? Dominic, Boring Road and Smith Road?
Yes, Dominic.
It seems like that would be a natural location for just a four-way stop.
I, I'll defer to the traffic engineers again on that.
Okay, I think Darrell addressed that, uh, already.
Well, Darrell addressed a traffic signal, meaning warrants.
So, it, it also does not meet a warrant for a four-way stop.
Even, even, you were saying post-development, it doesn't meet a warrant?
Right, so for, if we're to meet a warrant for a four-way stop, it has to have equal traffic, um, all four directions. So with this one, with Dominic being, there's like three or four houses right there, there's just not a lot of traffic. Especially with that horseshoe length, you would have to go in and close one of those sections of road because they have two access points.
There's, there's no ability to have a waiver for those requirements?
Um, there can be in a school zone. Um, you can do it anyways.
Because this isn't like a normal intersection here.
What was Commissioner Green's question again regarding that?
Are there ways to get around?
Well, being that, that this is not a state route, we, we don't have T, T dot oversight telling us what we can and can't do with a four-way stop or a signal. To me, I, I don't think a signal makes sense there. But I think a four-way stop, obviously we gotta think about how the little U shape and how to deal with that. And then I'm sure the fire marshal's gonna have some questions about how to get a fire apparatus in there. But it, it, it seems to me that a four-way stop would make a lot of sense. Maybe it's one of these things we evaluate after, to see if, hey, if there's a real serious problem. But it, it just, it's a low-hanging fruit and it's cheap. Um, again, may not be that cheap if you gotta, you know, reconfigure Dominic Point and turn it into some sort of little hammerhead or cul-de-sac or something.
So, um, we did, as part of the traffic impact study, look at what a four-way stop would do to that intersection. And because the traffic is mostly Smith Road, it just causes more backup and delay traveling through north and southbound on Smith Road.
Well, I suspect this, and this is a topic that this body spent years discussing, is the traffic on Smith Road and Grigio Chapel. You know, maybe that's another traffic calming measure to help discourage some through traffic that the Smith Road residents and the, the Grigio Chapel residents get. You know, having another stop sign in there, even though it might be frustrating at times, the, the amount of through traffic that goes through there, which in those roads really weren't designed for that amount of through traffic. Again, topic for another night. We've been dealing with this for twenty years, really, that, that particular corridor.
Yep, certainly something to consider.
Okay.
That's it, Mr. Mayor, for me.
Okay. Well, I think everything's been discussed. Bus rates, uh, look to be something that, uh, I think, uh, that they will have to look at, uh, to see. When you, when you look at what is currently being used at the primary school and, and at the others, then I guess that is what their group took into consideration when they said bus rate. I think the next step will be some timing, uh, on the particular traffic lights that we'll be able to do in the future. And, uh, you hit nail on the head there about where the traffic will probably be coming from. And Darrell's idea of, of the moving to Sugarwood Entrance, uh, that's a major deal. But, uh, it may be what the, uh, the future is. Uh, there's not that many cars coming in and out there, but, uh, it would be something that, uh, wouldn't give more room for stacking to where you're not competing for that center lane, uh, which is what is happening right now. So, this will be something where we'll just have to see, uh, what will, we can, we can do. Not necessarily the Knox County, it's not on them, it'll be on us to try to figure out what the best solutions are going forward once the school gets there. And we start seeing, uh, the number of people that will be, uh, using Village Commons and also Boring Road. I think, um, uh, Ms. Johnson said something about the, uh, the traffic that would be coming in from the, uh, the teachers. But, uh, Mark, go back to that, uh-
I have one other, if y'all are open to one other citizen comment, I had one. Or give me a card while we were discussing that, if, if you have a moment for that. Which slide do you want?
We will admit it. The one with the loop on it. It appears, I guess, the current way of thinking is for the teachers to come in off of Boring and come down to their parking lot. And, uh, I would say that there, uh, appears to be a gate, uh, down, right to entrance to Loop, Mark. Off of Village Commons.
Oh, down here?
Right here.
Yeah, in that area?
Yeah, appears that there is, there is a parking lot there in the front, which I assume would be for staff and, uh, cafeteria people. But that does go down to the exit. So I guess that would be something that would have to be looked at by Adura as far as how you would manage that, once it's open and, and working. So, uh-
Mr. Mayor, I'm not following you. Are you talking about the, kinda the co-mingling of the staff and the parent traffic?
Well, if you, if you look, uh, to the west of the school, there's a parking lot there.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be staff, internal staff in the front office. And I assume, and I, I may be speaking out of turn, somebody a little smarter than me with the school needs to tell me otherwise, but, uh, that would be probably the, the office staff and then also the cafeteria staff that would park in that lot. And then the other lot up there where the bus queuing is at would be the teacher's lot.
Up here.
I think that's- Yeah, okay. So, uh, in essence, what I'm saying is to, uh, there would be no reason for, for the, uh, the moms to drop off children that way, but that would be, I guess, a way that, that the, uh, staff could exit out that way. I'm, I'm not sure.
You mean the staff could exit on Boring or go back out to Village Commons?
No, they could go out, back out on Village Commons, it appears.
Yeah, and let, it was, is there a plan for an intermediate gate to segregate that, that parking? Or that, that, you know, through traffic, so to speak?
Largely, it, it will be exactly what we've talked about with some of these other things, is we're gonna get open and then we're gonna see how things function. But again, it's our intention that staff, regardless of who that is, enters off of Boring Road. Now, if at the end of the day, which is typically the teacher's end of the day is, or after the end of the students' day, if they chose to leave via Village Commons, I don't think that would be a problem. But we will have measures in place that will keep a parent from either coming from Boring Road and thinking they're gonna drop their child off, or if we're trying to short-circuit the loop and drop their child off in that side parking lot. Whether it's our SRO is there, or there's a sawhorse that gets put there that will dissuade people from being able to do that.
Okay.
Okay, that, that's great. That's all I've got. You had somebody else?
Yes, sir. John Holstrager.
Okay, John?
Hey, everyone. John Holstrager, three, four, five, Bernie Circle. I wanna loop back to this issue of the stacking for drop-off. Um, I've heard a couple of numbers that don't seem to square. I, I like where Noah and Shannon are going on this, because what I think I heard, please comment, was we believe we have about two hundred spaces available for stacking for drop-off. Am I right on that piece?
And what I think the other side of that equation is, the demand side is fourteen hundred. We have fourteen hundred students. I understand not all of them will be dropped off. But if we use those two numbers, we have a seven to one imbalance. We have fourteen hundred students, or something close to that, wanting to be dropped off and only stacking capability for two hundred. Why is that important? I believe it's important because if we get that number wrong, we're gonna back up all that traffic somewhere, maybe on Kingston Pike, maybe up on Boring Road. But it would seem to me that if we have space land available up near the school, we would wanna expand stacking capability, or at least give ourselves, um, undeveloped land area to later pave into stacking area so that we don't have the growth issue that Shannon brought up so that down the road when we have, I don't know, sixteen or eighteen hundred students, we have to have places to go with them. Could I ask for folks from the, um, traffic study group in Knox County to comment and see if we have those two numbers right, or am I off-base on that?
Let's, go ahead and what you got saying, and then we'll bring them up.
Yeah, that's, that's my question, is let's, let's look at the demand-supply balance there.
Okay, the gentleman from Adura, would you please come back up?
I'm gonna interject a little bit, because it seems to me that there's a couple, it's kinda, and part of this goes back to that bus participation rate. And then the other part of it goes back, is there any staggering? You know, are there kindergarteners dropped off in this fifteen-minute interval and et cetera, et cetera? And maybe that might address some of John's questions and concerns, and the rest of us.
That, that, you're, that's exactly correct. So, so the, the, the stacking analysis showed that we needed about the, the forty-seven hundred feet of stacking length, based on the analysis that Addy ran during the traffic study. And, um, as far as the, the timing goes, that's exactly correct. I mean, your, the stacking need is, is based on what that stagger is, 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 you know, as kids start to come. You know, is there a thirty-minute interval, a forty-five-minute window? You know, it's not like everybody, you're not having fourteen hundred cars obviously not show up at one time. I mean, it's not realistic either. So, so based on the analysis, the, it showed that we needed about the forty-seven hundred feet, which is what we provided on the site.
The other question I had was, that's two lanes, could you, could you make three lanes out of it if you needed? I mean, it looks like you've got real estate there.
Yes, I mean, i- if, if it got to that point where there was an extreme need, then, I mean, there's enough land. I mean, if it became necessary, then yes.
Because we, we can't back it up on Kingston Pike, so that's, that's, okay.
So you would, you would effectively add fifty percent more, I mean, if you absolutely had it, had to have it?
I like, Doug's behind you, and I'd like, Doug, it might have some things to add to this.
My recollection is, while we were having conversations with staff and, and the traffic impact study came in initially, there was an independent party that had looked at the traffic impact study. And their recommended stacking length was very much in the same neighborhood of what we showed. In fact, I think it was a little bit less than what our current scenario shows. So I think someone that is independent of this project, has no interest in this project, came back with a number of forty-four hundred linear feet, is my recollection. Does that sound familiar to either of y'all, or?
Is our assumption of the, you taking into account the bus participation rates as well as the staggering start times? Is, is all this, all these things go into the formula to create the, the stacking lengths?
Yes, the other thing that we're, I was not aware that we're doing, but this, but we are getting ready to start a, a bell schedule study across the school system to look at situations where we do have traffic that's pouring out or piling up out on the street, if there are things that we can do with bell schedules to mitigate some of that. So, there's a study that I guess is evidently supposed to gear up here in the next several months to look at, are there changes that we can make to bell schedules across the system or even in isolated instances to try to mitigate some of the issues that we have?
Right, okay. That's all I've got. I'm finishing. Anyone else down the line? Got any other questions?
I, I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, we're gonna be voting here soon, and I'm a little bit confused on exactly what we're gonna vote on. The agenda item says to discuss in public area on the preliminary plat and road improvements associated. So are we talking about that?
No, you're talking, they're talking about the two areas of improvements they're, they're proposing to the town's public streets, Village Commons, Boulevard, um, and then Boring Road.
Well, yeah, that right there.
Yeah, along with the, uh-
But we're, but the issue of some of the intersections that we're talking about, like the stop signs and stuff, is that really a separate issue that the town-
Well, the signs on, the, the speed limit signs on Smith Road are part of what this is, they're proposing. They are so, they're also proposing a left-turn arrow on Kingston Pike for eastbound into Village Commons, to extend that left turn in there. So those are also part of, of the, what the county's proposing as far as improvements to the town's public streets that are affected by this.
Mark, well, the site plan, excuse me, I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
But I don't think that includes what, uh, Myers, uh, Mr. Myers was talking about with the four stop signs. So my, back to my question, I'm trying to figure out exactly what, we, do we have two issues? Are we just voting on one here? And I'd like to kinda make sure I know what I'm voting for.
Well, the stop signs is not them, that's, that's on us. I mean, it's not their, the, it's Darrell's.
We're voting on what they're proposing to you all right now. That's not in the proposal. You, as I mentioned earlier, you can ask the county to, if they would be willing to look into that or help us with that, that's-
Which means there may be other measures that would, will be necessary to fully mitigate problems that develop from traffic. Is that a correct statement?
Well, looks like what we're-
Could be.
Yeah. What we're looking at right now is the section of road that will be improved on Boring.
Yeah, and I'm okay with that.
And the islands that will be taken out-
And I'm okay with that.
On Village Commons.
Signage.
Signage.
I think there was a good idea raised about maybe having three lanes of stacking within, and something that we could add to this. Well, it would be cheaper to do it now than to come back later and add a third lane, I would think.
Yeah, if you're grading, it's better to grade one time and, uh, put three lanes in, yeah. I agree with you.
Stacking's my biggest concern all the way through this thing.
Well, those are things you can certainly ask. I don't, we can't require them to do that, but if, if, you know, we can ask and present it to them, and if they wanna give that consideration, then they could do so.
Do we add that to this, or is that a separate notion, or what?
It would just be, I mean, if you wanted to ask that, you could just have it as part of the motion that a request was made to the county to consider these things as well. Doesn't mean they're gonna have to do it, but it's in, on the record that that request was made as part of what was, uh, presented for approval.
Or, or at least some pre-planning to accommodate that third lane in the event that it, it needed to be added in the future.
Right.
And probably that's just with the-
Just pre-grading so that it's cheaper construction in the future if it became necessary.
It's not that big a deal later on to go add some curb gutter and sidewalk and some asphalt, but it would be a big deal if all of a sudden you had to do some major grading for- Now, my memory is that portion of the property lays pretty well, so it's probably not a big deal. But I just don't know what they have planned as far as their stormwater system and so forth. Will we, will we even see a site plan, um, and grading plan and stormwater?
Like I said earlier, all that we really have the authority to do is to review the extent and location. And basically, we know what it is, they presented it, it's in the layout.
Right.
So we, you know, as far as what we can require them to present to us, I don't think we-
They don't necessarily have to follow the same stormwater requirements that, that we-
So we, you know, as far as what we can require them to present to us.
Like, they don't necessarily have to follow the same stormwater requirements that we...
They've submitted a drainage plan that the staff has looked at, because we want to make sure that what their drainage on-site doesn't create any impacts off-site, or to other town stormwater systems.
They're not required to do anything LID, are they?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so.
Now, the drainage will actually be, if I remember correctly, and you can attest to this, but it was to that there on Village Commons at the bottom of the hill there.
That's correct. So the drainage for the site, it generally runs off in three different spots, major spots. There's one on the, that's just south, one exit point's just south of the new entrance coming off of Village Commons. One's up at the northwest corner, below Baldwin Park. And then the other is on the lower east corner, pointed down towards Ingalls and Boring Road, down in the low corner, yeah, down there, and one up here. No, not up...
There's it, here.
Left, left.
Left.
Right or left?
To the west.
Oh, over here.
Yeah, there you go, right there.
Right there in there.
So there's an exit point that goes towards, to the west. And then, like I mentioned, the first one I mentioned was the one further down. Yeah, down that way, near the entrance. So we have accommodated, so that in the, within the drainage design, we have accommodated the existing conditions that are there to make sure that what we're sending off is not impacting that.
You're saying your post-development discharge isn't going to exceed your pre-development discharge?
Correct.
Okay.
You can approach the mayor and see what he wants to do.
Any other questions?
I'd like to add that language that we can consider...
Okay.
I think Alderman Kane asked if he could speak for a minute on this.
That would be Noah, did you make the question?
No, I think John did, but I think Alderman Kane would like to speak at the mic.
Oh, yeah, come up, no problem.
Alderman Alex Kane, I'm also a citizen here on the north side. I live at 524 Wyndham Hall. What I've heard in the discussion the last hour or so is relying on a traffic study, that studied traffic around an empty lot. I'd like to see some more forethought brought into this before we get to the point of, let's build it, and then let's see how the traffic turns out, and then have to go back through and fix it. The neighborhood next to this school, they're my constituents. I drive Smith Road through that intersection of Boring Road almost on a daily basis. That intersection with school buses in the morning is going to be detrimental to the traffic through there. Mr. Meyer, you made a great point that it would help alleviate the drive-through traffic on Smith Road and Grigsby Chapel Road, just by going with stop signs there. But I keep hearing the discussion of, well, let's rely on a traffic study. The traffic study's great, it gives you information, but we can move forward with it without having to stick to just the traffic study. And, you know, I'd like to see, thinking ahead, two years down the road, five years down the road, not, you know, eight months from now, 10 months from now, let's wait for the school to open, and then let's get the traffic again. But then we're going to be too late. It will run into infrastructure issues, we will run into not being able to add or improve the road because we've, you know, everything's been built at that point. You guys have all mentioned that, too. Put it into some of the pre-planning of it. But I think hearing, hearing the group from the school district, I mean, I worked on Farragut High School's campus for six years. I was struck by a car directing traffic on Farragut High School's campus. The traffic issues on these campuses are horrendous. Getting as many cars stacked up as you can ahead of time is great to mitigate the traffic on our public roads. I don't see why the school district wants, is settling on a proposed number. When I heard the traffic study person say that they use 25 feet as the common size for a vehicle, if you go look it up, the NTSB says the common length of a vehicle today is 19 and a half feet long. So, you know, the numbers are a little skewed, the math is a little skewed.
That's because of the gaps. They're taking because of the gaps between vehicles.
I understand that, but you need to have some more forethought. I love the mayor's idea of a third stacking lane. I can tell you Bearden High School and a couple of the different middle schools, they do that all the time. Adding that extra parking lot down at the bottom, where the parents could come and park, that allows more parents to get out of the stacking line if they want to have their kids in a parking lot. Let's do it now, let's not wait till after the school opens.
Well, I mean, the addition of the third lane, I think, is something that we probably ought to look at. And that's, again, on them, not us, so...
So we need to amend the motion?
That's what we can ask for.
It's up to you, all is hell, what you want to conclude.
Mr. Hale? Would you please come up? Mr. Hale, I'd like for you to explain, so that everybody knows what our position is here, and what we can and cannot do.
The issue, there's a couple of concepts that come together in the law on this subject. And there's a fair amount of law out there on it. Actually, there's an Attorney General's opinion where Jefferson County was building a school. And the very same questions that we're talking about were asked of the Attorney General, and there's, that Attorney General's opinion is pretty clear. Basically, though, what the law provides is that state agencies and instrumentalities of the state, like counties and utility districts, are not required to follow the ordinances, the building codes, and the zoning ordinances of the municipality in which their property is located. So that's generally what the law is, unless there is a statute that governs a particular subject that requires that the state agency or county follow the municipal regulations. Well, related to planning, under Tennessee Code Annotated, there is a statute that requires any building, whether publicly owned or privately owned, that is being built in a municipality, has to be reviewed and considered by the Planning Commission of the municipality in which it is being built. But the only thing that the municipality can comment on and approve is the location and extent, that's where Mark comes up with that language, the location and extent of what is being constructed. And it goes a little further. Even if the Planning Commission were to not approve the location and extent that was proposed by the, in this case, the school board, then the school board has the ability to override, or in effect veto, the disapproval by this board. So what you really have, it's a little bit like we had when we were dealing with the growth plan. We have the ability under the law to communicate with one another. They have to listen to what you all have to say, and you have the right to ask them to make additions to what they are proposing, but you don't have the ability to force them to do it. What you hope is that the experts who do the traffic studies have it evaluated well, and their reputations are on the line. If the thing gets built and it doesn't work like they planned it to work, then they have every motivation to make themselves look good by designing a good project. So our engineer, their engineers have talked, and they come up with a list of things that maybe are going to be problems, and ask the county to work on those. And that's what the law envisions, is that it will be this give and take, and that nobody's going to be telling anybody what they can and can't do, because the counties are, have a little higher priority than the municipalities under the law of this state. So that's essentially what the law requires. And, excuse me. The only thing that I would say beyond that is that you can approve with a request to do these other things, that, like the triple stacking, or what, ask them to consider that. But the key to all of this is, the only thing we're asking be done here today, though, is not the stacking issue. We're talking about just these things that you all have identified, the two areas where they're improving our roads. So really, the stacking issue is not really material to what you're voting on. You can always come back and jawbone when it comes to asking them to change things, and if they have the resources. And obviously, they're not going to want to build a school that is sitting there and it doesn't work. That's going to make them look bad, too. So, you know, I think I'd rely on my experts, and when I say experts, I don't mean the lawyer, I'm talking about the engineers, and do what they recommend. And if you have questions, I'll answer them best I can.
Okay, anyone have questions for Tom? If not, then we have a motion and a second on the floor. I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Pinchuk?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
No.
Vice Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Motion passes, five to one.
Okay. Let the record show that the agenda item number one has been approved with suggestions for the three lanes by a five-to-one vote, January 16th, 2025, at approximately 7:23 PM. Okay, thanks, everyone that was here. Next will be discussion and public hearing on a site plan for expansion of the fuel center at the Costco at 10-745 Kingston Pike, 20.68 acres, Zone C1, AEC Inc., applicant. And we'll wait just a minute, Mark, until we have a quiet room, and you can continue. Okay, Mark, it looks like we have the room back, so please continue.
Okay. Yeah, this is at the Costco in Farragut. There is a request to add six new fuel pump islands. Let me put the pointer on here. Which is, as a customer here, I think this is a much-needed request. So there, you've got the existing, you know, two deep bays here. On these three here that are existing, they're adding another row here, and then they're adding another column, new column of gas pump islands to the east toward Level Road, and of course, extending a canopy. There, to do this project, they're obviously going to have to extend the curb line along the east part of the fuel center area, and that's going to take out some of the trees. They do have a plan for planting back trees, and actually have a really substantial landscape plan for the area that's affected by this expansion. The staff's comments on this that we had remaining on the site plan are pretty minor. The staff recommends approval of this site plan, subject to the following comments, just verifying that the new curb line here along the east will be at least 20 feet from the Level Road right-of-way. That's the requirement in the zoning ordinance. The landscape plan, this is just a reminder, is something that we'll have to go through the Visual Resources Review Board. On the electrical, one of the electrical sheets, because they do have some new site electrical with the gas canopy, to basically, on that one, label the property line so that we can determine if the foot candles at the property line meet our requirement, which is 3.0 foot candles, in this case, along the right-of-way of Level Road. I think they do meet that, because they just didn't label the property line on the plans on the latest revision. Then including the height of the proposed light poles, they are adding some light poles with this project, just making sure that they don't exceed the overall 28 feet maximum that we allow. Attaining a building permit, they have submitted an application for a building permit. And if there's any signage modifications related to this request, that those would have to also be approved separately through the town staff, and potentially the Visual Resources Review Board if it involved modifications to the monument sign. So with those subject to's, again, the staff recommends approval of this site plan. And I do not have anyone that's signed up to speak with this.
Then I will need a motion now.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's Scott and Ron. Okay, and Vice Mayor, I'll start off with you on discussion.
No comment.
No comment. Commissioner Green?
No comment.
Commissioner Pinchuk?
No comment.
Commissioner Preston?
No comment.
Commissioner Myers?
One quick comment. It looks like the impervious surface is going to increase by about 5,000 square feet. Does that, do they, are they still under the 70% threshold in the C1 district?
Yes, they are. Yeah. That's something they looked at.
We just don't want to create something that is then non-conforming, and then would put them in violation of their lot coverage.
They've got a really big, kind of, as you know, detention area on the north end. And they've got that greenway that wraps around the property, and a fair amount of land on the west side.
No, I just want to make sure they're just still under the 70%.
Yeah.
And with that, I don't have anything else.
I don't have anything as well. With discussion closed, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Pinchuk?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Let the record show that the request has been approved, 6-0, on January 16th, 2025, at approximately 7:29 PM, by roll call vote. Next will be discussion and public hearing on a modification recommended by BOMA on a request to amend the text of the Farragut zoning ordinance to permit a second dwelling unit on an existing lot of record that is greater than 1.5 acres in rural, single-family residential. single-family residential R one zoning district, Tyler Butler, applicant.
Yes, this was reviewed and approved by Planning Commission at your November meeting as an ordinance twenty-four dash nineteen. It provides for the opportunity to have a second dwelling unit in the R one zoning district with certain conditions. And one of those conditions was, in the ordinance that you all recommended approval for, was that both of the dwelling units, the existing one and the second one, would be on public sanitary sewer and water. The reason for that language originally being in there is that in the R one zoning district, the minimum lot size for a lot that is on a septic tank is one acre. So, if you had a lot that was less than two acres, you couldn't have, you know, both, certainly couldn't have both structures on a septic tank. So, it was just kind of trying to parallel some of that, that logic and language that's in the R, R one currently. When this was presented to the Board of Mayor and Almena for first reading, the applicant spoke to the board about asking if the second, if, if the original dwelling unit could be exempted from the requirement to be on sanitary sewer and it just apply essentially to the new, the second dwelling unit. The board was generally open to that request, but because we did kind of specifically talk about that at the Planning Commission level, I felt like that that was something that needed to come back to you all to make sure you're okay with that modification and then re-recommend it to the Board of Mayor and Almena with that change. So, that's essentially where we're at with this particular ordinance and if y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those. I do not have anyone that's signed up to speak to this.
Okay. Does, is, do we have, yeah, we have applicant here. Tyler, you want to come on?
Tyler Butler, seven fourteen Fritz Road.
Okay, thank you. On this particular item, the BOMA discussed not hooking up this, the original. Okay, is it on public water now or well?
No, it's public water.
It is public water?
But it is on septic.
But it's on septic, okay. Yeah, want to make sure on that. In that case?
Do we need a motion?
Yes, we would need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, that's Ron. And, okay, Shannon. And no residents signed up to speak. Okay, Ron, since you started off, we'll ask you to, for your input.
I'm fine with it, I have no problem.
Okay.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, Shannon?
I have no problem with it.
No problem.
No problem.
I'm, I'm good with it, Mayor.
Okay, I'm good as well. Let the record show that, well, let's go ahead and vote. Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Pinchuk?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Mayor Williams, yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. Let the record show, the request has been approved by a six to zero roll call vote on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five at approximately seven thirty-four PM.
This will probably go back to the board for their first meeting in February. It's not on next week's agenda.
Okay, you hear that, Tyler? Did you hear that? Okay, thank you. Okay, discussion only on this one, the request for an amendment to a text of Farragut zoning ordinance to allow a drive-through lane to be permitted for financial and real estate services in the mixed-use town center planning area of the general commercial C one zoning district, Long Ragsdale Waters, PC, applicant.
Yeah, just since this has been a couple of months ago, I'll just give you a brief overview again of this, because we did talk about this at the October Planning Commission meeting, it was introduced to you all. The request is to provide for a drive-through service lane and window for financial banks and real estate services in the mixed-use town center portion of the town. As you all know, currently, drive-throughs are restricted to establishments serving food and beverage and only on lots of record, they're at least two acres and then there's a lot of conditions even with those to basically lessen the scale and visibility of the drive-throughs. So, one of the things that the applicant added in their request was the, although it really wouldn't necessarily be relevant to a text amendment, because that needs to apply to any qualifying property that would be affected by the amendment, but the area they're looking at is to the immediate west, the Campbell Station Inn off of Kingston Pike. And so, the applicant, you know, was presented the fact that if you look at the surrounding context, there are three banks in the immediate vicinity that have traditional drive-through lanes, you know, and that's, that's a fact. But the, the staff indicated that we would not be able to support an amendment to the language of the zoning ordinance for a number of reasons. One of, one of those was incompatibility with our comprehensive land use plan. The, you know, trying to, changing the language to provide for an auto-oriented type use is not consistent with the desired build environment that we're looking for in the mixed-use town center. It's just more kind of pedestrian oriented, promoting kind of active places to gather and things like that, those type of uses. Particularly with, again, with this context being immediately to the west of McGill Plaza, where we would probably want to try to encourage some kind of use that would complement what is happening at the Plaza and what will be happening with the Campbell Station Inn to try to, you know, complement that particular use. So, we did not feel that that was compatible with the comprehensive land use plan. Secondly, incompatibility with the town's strategic plan. One of the things in our strategic plan under enhancing the town's financial position, because we do rely so much on sales tax, there's a statement in there to identify potential retailers to increase local sales tax revenue with remaining commercially zoned properties left to develop. So, you know, changing the language of the ordinance to provide for something that would not meet that standard was something that the staff, again, indicated that we felt was incompatible with our strategic plan. Thirdly, we talked about the Chase Bank and being consistent. You know, when Chase Bank first came to the town staff for the, their site plan, they had a traditional drive-through and we told them you, that wasn't allowed. And so, they went back and made some amendments to that and basically ended up with just an, a drive-up ATM separated from the building and it's ATM only. There's no interaction or no full service with bank personnel at that remote location. The bank also added some outdoor seating along the east side of the bank to, you kind of have an outdoor gathering space that would kind of engage with the Super Chicks' use to the east of the bank to try to, again, meet the intent and the character that we're trying to promote in the comprehensive land use plan in the mixed-use town center. So, to change the ordinance to provide for something that we didn't allow Chase Bank to do, we felt was inconsistent, would be inconsistent. And then finally precedent, I talked a little bit about precedent and looking at the surrounding context with this request. The fact is, you know, if you look at, if you take surrounding context into consideration, you could have a lot of potentially bad precedent with text amendments with the mixed-use town center. Because with the Chase Bank itself, there's a, a fuel center just to the west of that associated with Kroger. You know, the fact is, in the mixed-use town center, there's a lot of older kind of auto-oriented uses that predate the mixed-use town center and what we were trying to accomplish in that part of the town. And so, the idea is, as those properties redevelop or you have new developments, that you have things that are built that are consistent with what the look and feel and the character is described in our land use plan for that, for that part of the town. So, you know, I think if you start changing the ordinance based on context, I mean, you've got, we've got some tire stores in the mixed-use town center, we've got a lot of drive-throughs that predate that requirement, but if you don't have the requirements in place, you know, and stick to them, you're never going to transition to anything different. And I think you all saw in the presentation I made about the past ten years and how our mixed-use town center has changed in redevelopments and all those new developments are consistent with the look and feel that we're trying to promote in the comprehensive land use plan. So, had we not had those provisions in place and stuck to them, we, we wouldn't have any of that, you know, that we've, we've seen in the past ten years. So, one of the things that the applicant did do was to go back and revise the site layout. And I've got the site plan, I don't think there's been a later one, I haven't seen a later one, but, so basically, you got Kingston Pike, you come in, over here's the Campbell Station Inn to the east and so the proposed Chase Bank building is here. They don't have a side, you know, a drive-through lane that's beside the, the bank like the other banks in the immediate area. They do have a remote kind of, but it is a remote full service, at least proposed at this time, structure here with transport tubes to where you can have full communication and, and do all your business with bank personnel in the building if you need to. And so, when I asked the town attorney to review that type of layout in relation to whether he felt like it was consistent with the Chase Bank's ATM, he felt like it was not and it would, basically the effect and, you know, of having that kind of setup would be the same as a traditional drive-through that would be adjacent to the building because you can still conduct all of your bank business with bank personnel from your vehicle. You couldn't do that with just an ATM, so he felt that those were fundamentally different. So, so that was the opinion of the town attorney. This was some renderings that are also included in the packet of the Fifth Third Bank at this particular location. And this, this is the remote drive-up station I was talking about. I'm sure there would be an ATM component to this, but as I mentioned earlier, they, I think they're still proposing the, the transport tubes to where you could, you know, conduct business with the bank personnel from this location. There's also a little bit of a concern, just functionally, you know, people are taking a long time because they are conducting business with bank personnel, that that could back up, you know. Of course, people may decide to just walk in if that starts happening. So, anyway, it, we felt like it was fundamentally different than the Chase Bank as far as how it would function and therefore, you know, if you did want to provide for this, it would require a text amendment. So, these are some renderings of the bank and you can see there how far the, the station would be. It's not, again, like a traditional drive-through lane that's adjacent to a building, but functionally it would be able to provide the same services. And that is kind of an overview of this request. Again, this is just workshop discussion. I do have one person that's signed up to speak to this, but if y'all have any questions for me, I'll be happy to try to answer those.
Let's hear the speakers first and then we can, uh, put some questions together.
So, the only speaker that signed up for this is Davis Overton.
Mark, can I report to the applicant?
You can, yeah, and he doesn't need to worry about time, so you're good on that.
Taylor Forster, eleven eleven North North Shore Drive, Knoxville, Tennessee, three seven nine one nine. Here on behalf of, as the applicant, on behalf of Fifth Third Bank and, and the property owner related to this request, as, as Mark's provided the overview of the, of the language, the prohibition and our request for the, for the text amendment. So, the present, it's opposite, the present prohibition text is, it's ambiguous as it's, as it's written. It's, as it relates to financial institution, I think real estate service offices, the, the pertinent language that, that results in, you know, some ambiguity is the prohibition that says drive-through service lanes and windows are, are not allowed. There's no further description or explanation included that identifies what's considered to be a drive-through service lane or a drive-through window. Even the term drive-through, it, it's not a defined term under the Farragut zoning ordinance. So, you know, that, that limitation and, and lack of, of additional language as to how the intent of it or the, what, why, why there is a prohibition and what, what type of, you know, what are you trying to preclude or prevent or prohibit out of concern for, you know, what are the ramifications, what do, what do we see or what do we think is going to be the problem with a traditional drive-through service lane or drive-through window for property subject to the mixed-use town center? This ambiguity of this language in the present text, it's been confirmed as to it being ambiguous based on past interpretation application and as Mark mentioned, the most recent, I guess, consideration and review of it was in relation to the, the Chase Bank, the new Chase Bank branch, which I believe is located at the Biddle Farm, further west and across, across Kingston from, from this property. My understanding with that review and consideration, Chase had requested the traditional drive-through and was told it wasn't allowed and then proposed the, how about an ATM, drive-up, or drive-through terminal type service. And Tom Hale reviewed it and provided an interpretation that he thought it is different and distinct from traditional drive-through and confirmed in his opinion that the language was likely ambiguous and under Tennessee law, when you have, you know, an ambiguity in a, in a zoning ordinance and a restriction on your property, the interpretation goes into the favor of the property owner. So, has been confirmed that, or, or expressed concern of, of the ambiguous nature and ambiguity of the existing language thereby supporting, you know, the, the need for a text amendment. With the request of text amendment, we agree, as noted in the staff report, the allowance of a drive-through is limited right now to businesses that serve food or, or beverages. And as the staff report points out, the ordinance has criteria or conditions that limit how that drive-through can be developed, where it can be on the property, how many lanes it can be, I think it's limited to one lane. Completely agree with all that and recognizing, you know, the site plan, the renderings have no application as to what we're requesting, we were providing those and submitting those to support or, you know, assist in, in what we're contemplating for a text amendment or what makes sense. And it, and it may be something that, there's different layers of what are drive-throughs or different drive-through options. You do a simple Google search and it, it amazes me to, to, the results that populated as to different designs of drive-throughs, whether it's for fast food, pharmacy, banks or any other type of use that, that relies on drive-through or commonly has a drive-through. So, you know, not having a defined term or potential multiple subparts to a defined term related to drive-through, whether service lanes or windows, is, is something that we, we'd submit is, is probably warranted or needed. Again, the reliance on the site plan and renderings is to show, we're, we're, we're not asking for a traditional drive-through attached to the building to three lanes where one is direct face-to-face through a window with the, with the bank teller or, or, or bank employee and then multiple lanes of pneumatic tubes. We're asking- We're asking similar to how Chase laid out theirs. It's detached. It follows some of the criteria that already exist related to the the food and beverage drive-through allowance. It's it's at the back of the property. It's one lane. It separates the the traffic and and doesn't cause conflict. I know in the staff report, there's comment about concern of traffic stacking and backing up. And Fifth Third, in through this process, has reviewed similar markets, whether based on size, newness to the market, in other jurisdictions in Tennessee and other other states. And the average traffic count or customer count that operates through the drive-through uses drive-through is anywhere from one to two cars per hour. So traffic stacking backup isn't 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 a real concern as to what we're requesting. Again, that text amendment should have criteria, should have conditions, and we'd support that and would would be in favor of that. Again, we think it's warranted, it's needed. The alternatively, we were here, I guess, originally in October and then came back. I came back in November, and I think that's when we introduced these plans at public forum. But there was didn't seem to be a lot of support at that time for a text amendment, but there was a conversation about, you know, why is the Village Green Shopping Center property under the mixed-use mixed-use town center overlay? And whether that was really appropriate considering the improvements, the development that exists there today? Understanding why you have these overlays for future redevelopment, property gets raised, redevelopment, lays out new roads, new new improvements, new infrastructure, you know, that that's not this property. This property has significant improvements, buildings that that are, you know, century-plus buildings that'll be around and isn't a site that's ripe for redevelopment where, you know, you can warrant or justify coming in and clearing everything and then coming back for through a full redevelopment. So, you know, if that if that is still something that this planning commission is willing to consider, obviously, we'd we'd support that. I do the property owner, Davis Overton, he's here. He spoke last time and and can further kind of discuss what the plans are with that property, what what they envision and what what they intend to do with it. As for the consistency between us and Chase Bank, you know, it's not being inconsistent when you're considering a request on two separate properties. Tennessee law says that each property, individual parcel, individual lot to be considered is is independent, that there are no two properties that are the same. There are different circumstances for each property. Even if they're side by side, there there are still going to be certain distinctions that make them make them different. And and the consistency or how one is applied doesn't make a different application to the other one inconsistent. Also, Chase Bank request drive-through was told it wasn't allowed, transitioned and came back with just the ATM approach. Chase Bank didn't request a text amendment to the ordinance. As as we, you know, started this process, I think, in September, you know, they didn't go through that process. They had the right to go through that process and request it, but, you know, they they shifted and and just went with the the ATM. So again, what we're kind of asking under that text amendment is a criteria that would allow what I guess refer to as more a drive-through terminal. It looks just like the ATM, has the option of the ATM. The only addition is that you have a underground tube and a computer or monitor live feed that you can conduct traditional banking business. I know Chad Henley with Fifth Third Bank here and can expand on this further, but Fifth Third saw the increase and demand for the continuance of of having drive-throughs during the COVID period where banking, you know, relationships, everybody was using the drive-throughs. Nobody was coming inside. So it is still a demand. Fifth Third needs it for their bank for for the for these new locations here in in Faragut, Knox County. Again, Davis Overton here for as the owner of the property and Chad Henley with Fifth Third can either comment or answer questions, but either text amendment or, again, fine with the removal of the Village Green Shopping Center from the mixed-use town center overlay. Thank you.
Whoa, don't don't run off.
Try to get get away from.
No, it's not that. It's just is there any questions for me for all your friend there? Okay, thank you. Davis Overton next. Yes, yeah, go ahead, Davis. Thank you.
Davis Overton, 5804 Glen Cove Drive, represent White Realty as its senior vice president. Mr. Forster pretty much just covered everything I was going to say. I just wanted to to reiterate, you know, we we bought this land in 1964, developed it in the early 70s. This center has been there for 50 years. It's not going anywhere. These happen to be two out parcels of a larger 30-acre site. So my question to since this is a discussion type situation is, you know, what is the relevancy of the mixed-use town center overlay on this property? To make it, you know, have outdoor seating and venues is it's already established. It's not I don't see that happening. Pedestrian trails throughout a parking lot of a of a site that, like I say, has been there for 50 years, developed. I just wanted to see if if this commission had any desire to lift that mixed-use town center overlay on the property. Thank you.
Whoa, don't run off. Any questions for Mr. Overton? None? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, yes, sir. You're next.
Chad Penley, real estate manager for Fifth Third Bank.
What's your last name again? I'm sorry.
Penley. Chad Penley.
Penley.
Yeah, with a P.
Okay, thank you.
So I know there's been a lot of talk about, you know, Chase and what they had approved. I cover a lot of territory for Fifth Third. I've done covered markets in North Carolina, Florida, Tennessee, kind of all over, and I run into them all the time. One of our competitors, they're kind of in a different league in the tiering. I think in a lot of categories are considered one of the largest banks in the world. And I know they are working on three new Chase Banks in the city or not in the city of Knoxville, but in the Knoxville area. None of them have drive-throughs. There are many examples all over the southeast that Chase does not have drive-throughs. They can operate differently than us. We do not have that advantage of being one of the largest banks in the world. And, you know, as Taylor said earlier, you know, during COVID, you know, we were able to keep all 1,200 branches open. If we didn't have a drive-through active, we would not be able to serve our customers. Obviously, banking is a critical function. And, you know, we would have just been out of luck based on, you know, how long COVID lasted. So that was coming out of COVID, we knew the importance of, you know, hopefully that never happens again, but we knew the importance, and it is important to serve our customers. So I think there's probably some questions, well, why do you need the drive-through? And really, that's it, is to serve our customers. You know, the day and age of everything going to drive-throughs, you know, people are wanting more convenience. You know, by my house, there's a brand-new Chick-fil-A going in. There's no sit-down. It's drive-through only. So all these restaurants eventually, I think, are going to get to a point where it's drive-through. And it's it's important for and that's what customers kind of want to see. So I just, you know, I appreciate your time reviewing this. You know, when we originally came in here, I think we presented like kind of a single-story contemporary-looking building. I think we had like three drive-through lanes attached. Through kind of working with Mark and some of the recommendations and seeing what Chase did across the street, we came and with a new site plan that shows a two-story building, all brick, detached drive-through, single drive-through lane, and really everything that looks identical to Chase, which is across the street. We're willing to make any additional changes. I mean, this is going to be a very expensive building for us. We are willing to do that, and I think it'd be a great addition, you know, for the community. So again, looking for your support to move forward with this, and we're excited to be, you know, part of this community.
Okay, don't run off, please. Any questions for for him? None? Okay, thank you. Okay, I guess really we're to the point where there may be questions for Mark after we've heard what we've heard. So I'll start down at the end with, or excuse me, Commissioner Pinchot.
I have none.
Commissioner Green.
I listened to the support comments, and I'm still inclined not to support the text change. And I base that position on all of the comments made by the staff. All the points made, I think, are valid. We have it's not like we really need another bank. If we had no banks in town, might have a little different opinion, might try to make some more consideration. But as it stands right now, I'm in support of the the staff's position to not support this type of change.
Vice Mayor?
I support the staff's position as well.
Okay. Commissioner Preston?
I'm with the staff on this one.
Commissioner Aron.
I'm kind of ambivalent personally. I don't see a whole lot of difference between this and the the ATM. I do understand the issues that the staff has brought up. I also I'm not necessarily in favor of government picking, you know, winners and losers and trying to determine exactly, you know, when we're saturated with banks. Yes, we do have a lot of banks, and I would love to have a panera bread or whatever there. But I don't necessarily think it's our job to determine whether a, you know, whether we want a restaurant or a bank. I think a bank's appropriate. I think they feel like that there's a need in the town of Faragut, and I think they've gone to great lengths to be able to try to de-emphasize the drive-through. And like I said, to me, it looks just like the Chase ATM, and I don't see a difference. But again, I'm I'm one on this commission, and and it kind of sounds like I'm in the minority here.
Okay, well, personally, I support the staff on this unless there is a way that you can word this to make sure that this don't happen again, meaning that we don't have another group come to us. And I don't think there's a way to do that. So plus, I think they they just correct me if I'm wrong. If you've got three parcels, empty parcels on your property, on your 30 acres, please come up if you don't mind.
No, we just have two. We have the one beside U well, probably three, the one beside U-Bank, and there's one between, I guess, Ralph McGill Center and the the drive, but it's a real small one that we've left because we need that for the as far as the landscaping and trees and such. So there's really only two that are marketable. There is one right beside the, gosh, I'm calling it Am South Bank, Regent's Bank, but they have that currently underground lease, and we do not we do not control that right now.
They sell the Christmas trees. Christmas tree lot?
For a while back, yeah. Mayos was doing it. It's a separate lot, but it is under a lease with with Regent's. Yes, sir.
And then you have the one right beside us over here, the big one?
Yes, yes, the one beside U-Bank, yes, and and James Town Boulevard, yes, sir.
Okay.
But also, and I appreciate you all voting and all that stuff, but can I ask for some clarification when you're saying you don't believe a bank should be here because of the text amendment? Or is everybody opposed to the consideration of lifting the MUTC?
We're just workshopping tonight.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry.
Your questions are fair.
Yeah, okay.
But I think it's kind of multifaceted question, so it's not necessarily one question that's all for everybody.
Right, I'm just trying to figure out which direction this discussion is going.
Well, I can answer for me. I'm not I'm with Noah on the not picking winners and losers, but I'm with the town's attorney on the interpretation of what we already have, and I'm not willing to do a text amendment to change it.
Okay.
And and if sorry, and if you'll Mark, when was this property placed in the MUTC?
Well, when we updated the current comprehensive land use plan that we have.
So what year was that?
In 2012, I believe. But it was but the area was also discussed as a the town center part of Faragut, even in that in our transportation plan.
Correct. You all had an outside party come in and do a study, and they recommended that. However, at that point in time, I said we are not in favor of it. However, it was imposed upon us, even though I told them that us, the landowners, did not want that overlay.
Sure, and I understand. And so the MUT is kind of it's I mean, we've got the vision plan next. It's a really core component that we're trying to create in the town. And so I don't remember if you were here at the last meeting when we discussed this or not, but we talked about, okay, well, if we remove the MUTC overlay from this parcel, then we start carving it up. And I don't think anybody.
Well, that's a completely separate application and request. If they wanted to request that, they can apply for that, but that is not what has been requested for this agenda item.
Right, but I mean, the further discussion, because I think Taylor mentioned it, if we wanted to remove it, and then this gentleman mentioned it. And so I was just kind of giving feedback that the last time it was discussed, we did discuss that, and I don't remember anybody being in favor of carving up the MUTC.
No, I think they were.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Anything else about anybody? If not, then we'll move on to the next item. This will be number six, discussion only on a revised concept plan for the commercial portion, Kingston Pike Village, partial 81.47, tax map 151, 18.5 acres, zone PCD, Kingston Pike Properties II LLC, applicant. Yeah, this request is does not relate to the PCD and the mixed-use town center. Let me just be clear about that. That that is governed under the mixed-use town center language in the C1. There's cross-reference that would relate to the PCD areas in the mixed-use town center. This is the the PCD property out at South Watt Road in Kingston Pike, and the request is to provide for the opportunity to have a drive-through with certain restrictions on one of the exterior. Let me just put the pointer back on here. So we got Kingston Pike here on the bottom of the screen, and then this is South Watt Road. This is the multifamily that's already finished here on the south part of this land. We've talked several several discussions with the planning commission on the commercial portion, which is this northern, well, more than half of the overall property. And we've looked at a number of concepts. One of the things that I think they have in mind is a drive-through on this particular space here on this building that is facing Kingston Pike. One of the provisions in the PCD is that if you have an auto-oriented use, it has to be situated internal to the property, and that would be that means it would be have to be in this part of the overall PCD area. So since this one is not internal and it's one of the outer buildings that would be visible from Kingston Pike, then that's the reason for the text amendment. So the the applicant actually added created some language for your all's consideration that was included in the packet. One of the provisions would be that the runage would have to be on to a street that's classified as a major arterial like Kingston Pike. And then they've incorporated a number of the drive-through lane restrictions that are in our current mixed-use town center language in the C1 zoning district. So that's basically the request. Again, this is just a discussion item. If you all have any questions about the the general idea or the text that's proposed by the applicant, the applicant is here, and he could speak to that. But that's that's the request.
Daniel Smith, Kingston Pike Properties II LLC, 315 Train Drive. The broader context to this is originally there was some fuel pumps on the site when it was envisioned to be a food city shopping center.
Yeah, they were.
And as we've reconfigured that and over the last six months to a year, I think that we've discussed this site. Kind of the, the impulse of the, I think, both us, the developer and the group, planning staff, is that because it's on Kingston Pike, um, and because we have the apartments behind, we're trying to create a more walkable, um, atmosphere for the interior of the site, for the retail and restaurants that we have planned there, that it would be better to have the, the vehicular drive-through on the outside of the site on Kingston Pike. Right now, there's a Dunkin' Donuts being, um, built across the shopping center. So it's very, it's already kind of a, a, a drive-through centric area on Kingston Pike at that location. And so that's why we're making this request for, for a text amendment.
Okay. Questions for the applicant? Noah?
No, sir.
I don't have any questions.
Vice Mayor?
And, and I actually will say, Noah, the last, um, time we met, maybe four months ago, he mentioned, um, you know, looking at, uh, a, a drive-through in a way that's done similar to the Starbucks here. And one of the, the, the biggest impact that we, the reason why it makes it really challenging is because of that access, um, to the traffic light that is, that there's an easement there. We have to keep that open. And, and when that becomes a, a drive-through lane, it really impacts the, the, the way that site can, can have buildings on it in, in a way that makes sense with keeping that access open and, and providing a connection to the adjacent parcel. Um, and so we just felt like going in that direction was gonna be, uh, a major challenge on the, uh, east side of the site.
My question would be, uh, to start off with is, give me a, a flow of traffic in and out of this drive-through.
Well, you're just, you're coming in-
From where?
To the right.
You're coming in off of, uh, Kingston Pike-
Correct.
At a non-signalized road?
Or you're coming in off of Watt Road and you're taking a right, you're wrapping around the building and then you're going in behind.
Okay, now you're going there and going that way.
And then what?
Then how do you?
Well, that's a double, that, that's a twenty-six foot wide, um, uh, drive. So you can take a right out of that as well.
You mean on to Kingston Pike?
No, you can, in other words, you can go, when you're coming out of the, you said, and then where?
Yeah.
I'm saying, when you come out of the drive-through, you can go right or left. And then-
That'd be a tough U-turn.
Pretty sharp right, isn't it? Yeah, I don't, I don't see that working, sorry.
But, but I do think the west entrance, I mean, it, it has all turning movements at that west entrance.
It may be, it may have to be left, though. I don't, is, does it indicate left only? I know it's a twenty-
No, you've got all turning movements there.
Yeah.
Oh, you're fine with that. It's, it's just a little tight there on that internal.
We could prob, we could, there might be a way to, to, we may, we may take some feet off the building and allow a turn that way if we have to.
If you got a wall, if you got a wall there, what is that? That little finger pointing, uh, uh, north?
It's just a sidewalk.
No, no, not there. Go to the other side, Mark.
Over here?
Right here, right here. Yeah, what's, what's that finger?
That's just a landscape island.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, I think, what's gonna be tough to go around.
And one, you got kind of a conflict situation right here because when you're coming in, you're in this right lane and then you gotta come down here to get into the stack.
If, if the stack is, is full, you'd have to go wrap around.
Yep. It's a little funky.
And I'd be surprised if that's-
Then you got the dumpsters right here and they're backing out right into the access. And that's, that would be not ideal either. Although that wouldn't be that frequent. But that is something that-
Yeah, John put it there and I don't know, um, I mean, we can-
I mean, I'm not really analyzing the site layout with this item. It's just text amendment, but that- There's some things that, there's really some things on the overall concept in general that I think needs to be worked more on.
Let's hear that.
We'll talk about that later.
Let's hear that, Mark.
Well, that's actually the next item. I don't know if y'all-
Okay.
Are you all open to the text amendment language at least? Or, I guess that's the feedback I need from you all so we know whether to put it, that particular request in an ordinance for y'all's consideration.
Consequences that you can see from that text amendment? Do you have a better?
Well, this is the only PCD outside of the mixed-use town center, so.
And what was the, the rationale, why we, why we didn't want the drive-throughs along the perimeter? We wanted them internal?
I think it, I think it was, there was a fuel center with the original concept. And we wanted to have the, that more internal to where it wasn't kind of the most visible element.
We wanted to de-emphasize that, that sort of use.
Yeah.
Because I don't really have a problem with that concept right there.
This would have a lot more restrictions on the drive-through, obviously, because, you know, you still, your auto-oriented use is still, if you have any, it would be restricted to all those parameters that are mostly in our current mixed-use town center language for drive-throughs.
I'm open-minded to it. I mean, Daniel, I'm a little worried about, like, when the restaurant gets deliveries from behind the building and they're having to run their, their, you know, doc, their dollys with boxes in between these cars. I mean, the, the, I think you've got some challenges to try to work through. Now, odds are, you're probably never gonna have that many cars stacked. I don't know, I, I, I mean, I don't know exactly coffee shop usage, but it seems like to me, you know, they have a period of time when, you know, everybody's going to work or going to school, that they might get backed up. So I guess that's probably from seven-thirty to eight-thirty. And probably the rest of the time is probably just a one or two cars in the drive-through. Again, I don't know, but if you were backed up that much and you're trying to get a delivery driver trying to run in the back door of the restaurant, uh, you, you do create some vehicular pedestrian conflicts.
Delivery, yeah, and that's, and we'll get that, to that later. I mean, that is the crux of the, some of the staff's thoughts on the, uh, on the site plan in general. And I, I, I've had, I have some ideas maybe to address it. But, um, it's, it's with the drive-through on that side too, because you have a, you, or, not the drive-through, but the, uh, the, the, um, loading zones and, and things like that. So we, we have the pedestrian use in the back. And so we're trying to, you know, where do you put, where do you put the deliveries? And, you know, when you're trying to, um, a site like this, it's, it's, it's a challenge.
My opinion, you're way over parked, to start off with.
Well, on the, see, we are parked at what we can under Farragut's zoning, um, like maximum.
Is that like four, four point five per thousand? Is that kind of where you're, you know, you're using?
And it's, like, on, on this type of center, we wanna have more sit-down restaurants. That's where you start to get, that's where you start to get a, a challenge with parking. You know, if you have a Mexican restaurant and you have a, you know, any other type of use, then it gets, that's where the parking could be a major problem. If those type of tenants, if we, and we, we're talking to some of those type of tenants. If we get too many of them, it could be a, a significant problem with the five per thousand.
We're, we're not here micromanaging a site plan. And I, I think, I think what the applicant needs is, they need some feedback from us, is would we entertain a, a drive-through, not necessarily in this configuration, but in general, uh, thoughts and, and principle on, on this outer parcel of, next to Kingston Pike? And I think that's the feedback he's looking for tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm open to it.
Okay.
Okay, well, that's good on that item.
Thank you.
Like I mentioned earlier, you can go introduce this next item, but this is, obviously relates to what we just talked about.
Okay, you were talking about urban engineering?
No, sir, agenda item number nine.
Now we are gonna look at the site plan.
Yeah. And this is just discussion as well.
It's a revised concept plan for the commercial portion of Kingston Pike Village.
Yeah, a little bit. Got it.
There you go.
And this is the one we get to talk about parking and whether or not we like the building location.
Discussion on revised concept plan for the commercial portion of Kingston Pike Village. Partial eighty-one point four seven, tax map one fifty-one, eighteen point five acres. Zone PCD, Kingston Pike Properties Two LLC applicant.
So, yeah, this one, um, we've looked at a number of concepts on the commercial portion of this planned commercial development at Watt Road in Kingston Pike. If you remember back in June, I think it was the last time it came before you all, the western more portion of this, they were looking at a daycare, um, use there. Of course, original plan, as you remember, was a small footprint grocery store, um, the original PCD. So they had various other concepts, but this is kind of, um, what they're proposing at this time, at least conceptually. One of the comments that the staff has brought up at all the reviews that we've had on this is to try to, um, have the engineering team work with maybe a land planner, landscape architects, to kind of figure out how to kind of blend in the residential with the commercial a little better in terms of being more inviting. Because if I'm walking down from the apartments, first thing I'm gonna hit is a loading area and a dumpster. And, you know, it's just not a inviting kind of, um, way to transition from one to the other. I know you gotta have a place for those things and that is a challenge, uh, when you're trying to figure out how to, to fit those on there. But I think focusing, and I've mentioned this every time we've looked at this. I know there's topographic issues too, that's why this, the sidewalk is kind of switched back. But just trying to really focus on this area here, the transitional space between the residential and the commercial, and trying to make it an inviting interface, um, so that people in the apartments, you know, you got a lot of people that are gonna be living up here that won't need to use a car to come down here and support these businesses. And, you know, trying to make that an inviting, uh, interface is a real important part of this project. And since it's a PCD project, you know, these projects are kind of expected to go a little above the normal standard, um, that we require. Because we give some flexibility in other aspects of the, the development that a traditional development wouldn't have the opportunity, you know, to, to take advantage of. So I think, as I look at this, I wouldn't personally support this concept. I think there's a lot of reworking, frankly, that needs to be done with this to try to figure out how to make that transition better. Um, I think he's, they do have outdoor gathering spaces again, but these, again, and it's probably just a factor of trying to fit everything on here, but these are kind of right against the loading area. Probably not the best setting, um, for that. Just, I think just really getting somebody to help, the engineering team, because they're, they do a good job with what they do, you know, like, uh, layouts of, uh, the storm system and, you know, the technical things. But the creativity in trying to get the, the, uh, the look and feel and the character that could create something a little unique and different and inviting and marketing, marketable, is, I think, still a little bit lacking with this concept, so. That's just the staff's thought on it. I don't know if commissioners have any, any additional input or suggestions and things like that. We're not, we're not here to design the site. I mean, that's not our role, we're not, we're not, that's not our expertise. But I think our expertise is to look at the broad concepts and the ideas of what the PCD is trying to encourage and whether the development, you know, is moving in a direction to satisfy those requirements. So I think it still needs some work, some work to do on this, frankly.
Okay. We'll start down at the end again with, uh, Commissioner Pinchot. Mr. Green?
I have no comments.
Commissioner Preston?
I, I agree with Mark. I'd like to see the transition be different, more conducive to what the town expects of PCD. And are any of those little islands, um, plants or landscaping?
There is a landscaping plan on the third or fourth. Maybe pull that up and that may help that better.
Oh, there we go.
It's a prettier picture. Um, you know, this is all driven by the same discussion we had about loading, where do you load? Um, and, and so in the beginning, we had a driveway around the back of the property. And so we tried to address the connection, um, questions about how people are gonna connect without having to mess with that back of the area. So our thought was, okay, we'll have this kind of loop road in the, in the back of it to allow for a back of the house where people can do deliveries. If, if, this is about the best you can do under that kind of concept. So if this is not gonna be an acceptable level of mitigating that, that issue, the only way that I, I kind of can see it happening is we're gonna have to add some loading zones where some of that parking is and, and, and remove the parking, put in some sort of, like a downtown street would have loading zones for, for, uh, either on the side, both sides of it, or on the back, right away from the, um, the pedestrians. And then we can look at moving the dumpster areas to the sides of the property rather than the back corner and middle back as it is now. I think that, and I can, we can go back to the drawing. It's, it, I don't think it's a major revision that we can, but we can see what that does. That will totally eliminate that road, it'll end up landscaping, we can move the buildings back, try to center it better and see, see if that is something that, is something, are you following? Does that make, does that some, does that sound like the, the right direction that you'd like to see?
Daniel?
I would, go ahead, Ron.
I just have one question. Your buildings are parallel to Kingston Pike. Have you, I don't know, because of land constraints or what, but have you tried running them perpendicular? And do you, I think that way you might have some room between the buildings for loading.
I, I hate, I hate that. And the reason why is because the, the, these tenants, you know, having the visibility of, of the storefronts, I know the sign's not huge in this, in, in the, in the, in Farragut, but nonetheless, having the attached building signage. And part of the problem is you see there's a choke point in the middle of the site. So you, so when you, you can't create an L very easily because of that jog there of the detention pond that kind of cuts into that, into that area. And it makes it, it makes it a real challenge to then, and, and there's, and there's also a storm pipe that runs through there, a massive one. Not, it's actually sewer pipe. And so you can't L it down because that, because you, you see, you see the, um, you see where the road cuts to the right, where the vacant land, where there's a little stub out of a road? There is a, and if you go south of that, maybe a little bit south of that, if you go, go down-
North.
Right there. Yeah, that's north, sorry.
The other north.
The, uh, there's a storm pot, or a, a, a massive sewer pipe that goes all the way through there. There's a big easement there. And, and so it, it creates a challenge-
Can't build on it.
With there, yeah.
My, my thought was if you come on that road off of Kingston Pike, it's more like a main entrance into this. And the stores on the left or whatever would be on your main street. And then if you ever develop the property on the right, those buildings would be facing that road as well.
Yeah, and the, the challenge with that is, well, we can't really move, I don't think we can move that entrance because that, that entranceway is already there because it's not our property. It's, it's, there's an easement. There's an easement, the credit union owns it. And so, and then the, um, we'd have to create a new curb cut. We'd have to keep that curb cut there. I don't think that's in the cards. And then, so there's just, there's some challenges there. And then if, if you're talking the left side of it, that is our, we see that as our major way into the site. And we have an easement with the-
Off of Watt Road?
Yes, because we, there's a traffic light there and we have an easement with the little, little Joes, that they have to keep that open. So there's all those challenges that are impacting and basically why it's driving that, you know, traditional crossway. And also the reason why I, I personally think that the tenants like to have that storefront as you see, rather than a, you know, like an alley street.
The storefronts and the, and the buildings in the back aren't gonna be noticed from Kingston Pike.
They're gonna be impacted a little bit, yes.
You know, again, we're not here to design, but, uh, but just my point-
The center one. The center one.
When Tyler was involved, you know, this has been, how many years ago?
Twenty eighteen, I bet.
Yeah. You're right.
Twenty seventeen.
When we first discussed this, of course, that empty parcel you've got there to the west, that was gonna be a grocery store. But before the grocery store, okay, when we were just in discussion, he had talked about putting the small shops to take the road in right beside the credit union and then go all the way back and then come out. And he was talking about putting the shops up that road facing where you were gonna put the food city, okay? This is before the food city. And then he had a restaurant that was gonna be, a large restaurant, that was gonna be right where those two buildings are, not the third one to the right, but the other two. But it was turned this other way, okay? Like those were. And it had the in and out. Those little Joes, you know, it had the driveway there, and then it had the driveway up above.
But even that, that plan involved a grocery store, right?
Not at first, it didn't.
I think, well, I remember when he bought the property in 2006, and they were working with three groceries from the get-go on this site. So I don't think they ever thought about developing this site for anything but a grocery store and a shopping center.
He was initially looking at it-
I'll ask him.
Because I was an alderman then. I wasn't mayor. This has been quite some time ago.
Yeah, 2006.
But it was kind of a thing where he, soon as he got the grocery store, you know, ideal, then you went with that. So now, what's the plan for the empty parcel?
You know, I think if we can fill this up, it probably ends up being more retail shops. But then it could also be, there could be opportunities for, you know, an office building bank, or a, you know, maybe a daycare, or-
Fifth Third Bank?
You know, if you let them have a drive-thru, they go there.
We just said we were open to it.
Yeah.
But-
It'd be okay there, because it'd be internal anyway. So, I mean, even if you didn't amend-
But yeah, you know, Fifth Third has reached out to us, but I don't know. They may want something on Kingston Pike as their primary, primary. But the, and there's a lot of traction on this site, so I think we can fill it up. That'll be the next phase, and we'd like to do more retail shops, most likely. Or some sort of, you know, specialty, you know, some, could be a medical office. It could be, you know, some sort of, you know, mixed-use type product that would fill it out. Kind of like if you look at North Shore Town Center, there's a lot of retail uses. But then there's a, there's a kids', is it ortho?
Yeah.
And then there's also a big bank, obviously, Y-12 credit, federal credit-
Okay, so now you're looking at phasing this, then?
Yes.
Okay.
That is, that's, we can't, I don't want to, we're reluctant to take on, this is forty thousand per feet retail. We need to break it up into one final phase.
Okay.
Okay. So I guess I'll get with John, Site Inc., and go over some of these comments. And if you guys have any more comments, we'll try to redress it and come back.
Daniel, I'm counting up thirty-two thousand square feet with what you've got presented here. The reason being is, you've got six dumpsters for thirty-two thousand square feet. I'm wondering if you could eliminate those two dumpsters on the south side and try to make that entrance from the apartments a little more appealing? And if you had an issue with your dumpsters, for instance, restaurants are tough on the dumpsters, just increase your frequency. But I do think six dumpsters for thirty-two thousand square feet is an overkill.
Yeah. So the, I think we would, you know, I have a twenty thousand square foot shopping center in Oak Ridge. We've got four dumpsters there. And it's, we are using it, although we could have, we could drop to three and-
I run two dumpsters on fifty-four thousand square feet, and we run them, we empty them three times a week.
Yeah. Restaurants are heavy users. I've been burnt where we've had one dumpster on sixteen thousand.
Yeah, that's a problem.
Now you're like all the dumpsters.
I think you could evaluate. I think there's a way to, staff has concerns, and I think the rest of us have concerns about, you know, PCD, the big part of PCD is just that. It is the planned commercial district where you can integrate some residential use and your retail and restaurant, maybe even office use. And unfortunately, what we're looking at here is I'm just not seeing that integration. You know, they just don't feel like they're real compatible against each other. And a big thing that I think would fix it is you could eliminate those dumpsters. I know the challenges with dumpsters and the access and the turnarounds. But my thought is, I think four dumpsters would be plenty. Again, you're the guy that's gonna have to be dealing with angry tenants if it's not.
Yeah, I think four is plenty. And I think we're gonna have to, one dumpster that serves the Kingston Pike parcel, like the Alp parcel, because it's so far to go.
Oh, no, no, I'm not saying-
And then I think you have one in the back.
I think you need to be careful, but I think you got an overkill back here with these other-
We can do that.
You got, what, twenty thousand square feet? You got four dumpsters for twenty thousand square feet. I just don't think you need it.
I think you're probably right. We can address that.
Okay, Mark.
Okay.
We'll just-
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
Okay, next will be discussion only on a request to amend the text, the fair-governed ordinance to lessen the setback for outdoor fences associated with commercial kennels in a general commercial C1 zoning district where kennels abuts property not zoned residential or agricultural. And that would be urban engineering applicable.
Yeah, this, currently in the C1 zoning district, commercial kennels are permitted use, and they're subject to a number of conditions. One of them deals with the, if they have outdoor fencing, there's certain setbacks. Fifty feet for if the property adjacent to where the fence is situated is not zoned residential or agricultural. And then it's two hundred and fifty feet if that property's zoned residential or agricultural. The applicant is requesting to lessen that fifty-foot setback to twenty-five feet if the property, adjacent property is not zoned residential or agricultural. There's not really a lot of properties that would be affected by this. The property in question, although it's not really necessarily relevant to the text amendment, is the Dogtopia. And it's kind of, it's an unusually shaped parcel, for one thing. But to the east, you have Christ Covenant Presbyterian Church. It's zoned general commercial. And then it's kind of, the rest of the parcel's surrounded by the Mormon temples property that's also zoned commercial. So there's not any residential remotely close to this particular location. So that's the request in the C1 district that the applicant has presented. I think the staff would add to that, that if you're gonna amend that language to also make it apply to, you know, if the adjacent property is shown as a residential land use on the future land use map, that, you know, you still have to, would still have to abide by the two hundred and fifty-foot setback because it may be, maybe zoned commercial, but the vision of that property may be residential. And you wouldn't want to have that potential nuisance. The reason, obviously, for the greater setback is the noise of dogs barking and, you know, that kind of thing. And you don't want residents being real close to that and, you know, or interfered by that. So I think with that additional language to tie it also to the future land use map would add a little bit extra layer of protection to the text amendment, if you all are open to looking at that.
Yeah, I am. Vice Mayor?
I would be.
Commissioner Green?
No comment.
Commissioner Pinchot?
Okay.
Commissioner Preston?
I'm open to it.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes, I'm also open to it.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that what you need?
Yeah, we can put that in an ordinance language format. Okay. Thanks.
Yep. Folks, it is time to take a break.
We only got one more item. You want to do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, no. Okay. It's up to you. Okay.
We'll take a break, and we'll have one more item. We'll take a break and we'll have one more item.